Good evening, welcome to the City Commission meeting Tuesday, February 4th. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oops, we have to do a roll call. Trying to zip us through.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamchak?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Will you now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are public comments. Public comments, let me get my right thing here. Those wanting to make comments on city businesses not related to any item on the agenda can do so at this time. Members of the public that signed up in person on the list at the podium before the meeting will go first. Then, any members of the public in the audience may stand and be recognized to come forward. If you haven't already signed up to speak, please be sure to sign in on the list located at the podium. Please state your name and residential address and/or the organization you are representing for the record, and for those listening or watching at home. Each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the Commissioners nor the city staff will answer questions or debate on this issue. We will take your comments under advisement. The Commissioners wish to notify the public this evening that they will be considering motions at the February 11th work session and at the February 18th legislative session to shorten individual public comments to three minutes per person and to cap all public comments to 30 minutes per section for the general public comments, the consent agenda, and each agenda item. Kathy Dvotowski, would you like to sign up?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Dvotowski. I live at 100 South Delaware Avenue. And I am concerned about what the mayor just read, about this proposed plan to reduce public comment to three minutes from five minutes and to limit overall public comment time on given item to 30 minutes. It really wasn't that long ago, I think it was maybe 2018, that Members of the public had unlimited time to speak to Commissioners, which I can concede perhaps wasn't always the best idea. And they also allowed a single person to come to the podium more than once, which also perhaps wasn't the best idea. So limiting it to five minutes seemed like perhaps a good compromise. But I think further reducing it to three minutes starts to feel like you don't really want to hear from the public. And likewise, limiting a given item to 30 minutes also is a concern. Most of the time, items probably aren't that controversial. Probably it would be able to be discussed in 30 minutes or less. But on occasion, there have been highly controversial items come before this commission. I'm going to use rental inspections as an example of one, where I think there was a lot of public comment. And if public comment was limited to 30 minutes total, well, there's the potential that the first 10 speakers all are talking on one side of the issue and the commission doesn't really ever get to hear from people from the other side of the issue. The other problem, I think, with that is sometimes when you come to a meeting, you aren't necessarily thinking you're going to speak on a given matter because you're not really then concerned about it. But then somebody says something either by staff or another member of the public and you're suddenly inspired that you want to say something. But you didn't sign up ahead of time and there's already 10 speakers that have signed up and so you're just out of luck. And I find that to be kind of a problem, that this commission for some reason is afraid to hear from the public, doesn't value public input such that they want to limit it. I don't know really what the reason is behind this. And there was also a meeting not that long ago where an item on the consent agenda, I believe it was about the resolution involving Parks and Recreation, was pulled from the consent agenda as it lays out in the agenda. Consent agenda items removed are supposed to be discussed immediately after the consent agenda, but instead staff was recommending that it go all the way to the end after the general agenda, which again had the sense of feeling like, well, because we didn't really want to hear from the public. So if we put it at the end of the agenda, maybe they'll get worn out and they'll leave. And I'm just very concerned about what this message is sending to those of us in the public who would like to speak to the commission. And I really don't need to fill two more minutes, but I really was trying to fill up five minutes today just because this might be my last chance to talk for five minutes. So for that reason, I'm going to add one more thing and say that if you're going to revisit the indoor pool situation, please don't put it in City Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber?
Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. This commission has been pursuing growth strategies in a city that hasn't grown in a decade. They've allowed our infrastructure to go to ruin, put us at 2/3 of our debt limit, and perpetuated policies that leaves 24% of our citizens beneath the poverty line and 43% of our students eligible for free reduced lunch. Riley County is famous for being the only county in the entire state of Kansas in persistent poverty, with a poverty rate almost twice the national average. And yet I repeatedly hear our Commissioners proclaim that we need more luxury housing and that we must invest in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Downtown and Aggieville Associations, and the Chamber of Commerce to get results and growth. In 2024 alone, this commission spent $16,541,402 on community and economic development. And the results? No growth. This was confirmed at Regional Growth Summit last Friday when Math Tarleton, a community development expert and consultant, revealed that Manhattan posted 0% job growth in 2024. In November, the commission, recognizing that they have never established performance benchmarks for the chamber or their programs, asked the chamber to come up with their own grading rubric for future performance. This alone is absurd enough. I've never been in a class where the students decide how they're graded or a competition where the contestants get to decide the rules. On top of that, they did not hold them accountable at the end of the year when they were unable to report on a single metric of the dozens produced. You don't know an investment from a scam. There are people in the city who do, citizens who challenge you. You complain that millennials and Gen Z don't participate in democracy, but now that I have a team of 20 who largely disagree with you, you want to change the public speaking rules. This isn't even the first time. I have not been public about these injuries, but it's time. On September 17th of last year, then-mayor Susan Adamchak forbade my ex-partner and I from speaking. She cited that the rules called for residential address. Actually, the address of my business is my legal address and that business is the business of which I am the founder, sole owner, and CEO. And this was done with the blessing of the county, state, and federal government. She then accused us of not living in Manhattan. Never mind that two weeks prior she broke her own rules and allowed the Vice President of Sales for Hilton, who gave a Springfield, Missouri address, to speak for 5 minutes and 48 seconds with back and forth from the Commissioners. We came back on October 1st with redacted copies of our legal documents, RV registration, tax returns, health insurance, bank statements, and supplied them to the Commissioners. Don't look surprised you saw them. Mayor Protem McCullough allowed us to speak. Adamchak was absent for the entire month of October. If you were my employee, with that absentee rate, I would have fired you. On December 17th, many citizens showed up to express their dismay and betrayal over the commission choosing to add membership fees to the city-owned rec centers, even though they were paid for through a sales tax increase and promised to be free for all citizens to enjoy. At the last minute, then-mayor Adamchak cut everyone's time short to three minutes. As a result, Director of the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition, Debbie Nuss, was unable to finish the comments she had prepared and handed off the last sheet to Maureen Shaahan. After her comments, Adamchak chastised her for reading another's writing and cited it as being against the speaking rules, except it wasn't. On January 21st, Gwen Riffle, a longtime resident and commercial real estate developer, delivered a polite and well-reasoned criticism of Back Nine's new plan for, we call it the "Aggieville Mudhole", it's formerly known as the Midtown Project. Riffle also owns a vacant lot near Aggieville. Adamchak, attending virtually, hurled ad hominem's at him asking, "What's your plans?" Riffle replied, "I'm working on those plans now." Adamchak pressed on, "Yeah, and when will you bring those to the commission before you're challenging other people to bring forward plans?" Again, not a rule. Now it's three minutes with a 30-minute max. Controversial items regularly get 30-plus citizens who you should listen to. A majority of those citizens would not even be heard under these new speaking rules. I don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance here because this isn't democracy. On October 1st of last year, I asked the commission if they were allergic to accountability. I think we have our answer.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the...
Katie Smith of 701 North Fourth Street. Good evening, Commissioners. I think by now we've all heard that mental health is a challenge in Manhattan. It's one of our top three, right next to housing and affordability. But it's not just about the access of services. It's about the environment we create as a community. When people are forced to live in constant fear of family separation, of being targeted, of simply existing in public, it takes a toll on their mental health. It takes a toll on the individual, their families, and the entire fabric of the community. That is why it's alarming to see how some people in Manhattan speak of their neighbors, reducing human beings to nothing more than the word "illegals". Dehumanization isn't just hateful rhetoric. It is an early warning indicator that a community is psychologically preparing itself to carry out violence. That is a mental health crisis too. Hate is not abstract. It is real and it is emboldened. Right next door, Missouri lawmakers are proposing a bounty hunting program, encouraging people to hunt another human being. Last week, a Missouri man impersonated an ICE agent, broke into someone's home, choked them, and then demanded for them to show their citizenship papers. When fear and dehumanization take hold, this is the outcome. There will be people who hear this story and think that we should do the same. Those are the kind of behaviors that killed Anne Frank. There are Kansans who have had the audacity to question my citizenship, to tell me that I might not belong. Imagine what that does to a young person, hearing those messages for the first time. The mental health consequences of being told you are less than or unwanted are severe, especially when that message is coming from people in your own community. So my question to the commission and to the city is serious. What will we do when militant vigilantes and neo-Nazis make an appearance in Manhattan? It's not just undocumented immigrants who are affected. Will every non-white person have to start carrying their passport and birth certificate? That is unconstitutional. But beyond that, it is an assault on the well-being of our entire community. Immigrants are the lifeblood of this country and our economy. The Kansas Livestock Association has already raised concerns about what mass deportations would do to our workforce. These aren't just numbers. They are the people who harvest our food, build our houses, and keep our economy moving. And yet, they have to live in constant fear and stress. If we want to improve the mental health in this community, we cannot turn a blind eye. I understand that Manhattan cannot declare itself a sanctuary city without consequences, and I'm not asking you to. What I am asking is that we take real steps to ensure that all of our residents can feel safe, supported, and valued. At the bare minimum, we need to keep our schools and churches safe. Mental health is not just about individual struggles. It's about the structures we create and the messages we send. I'd like to thank Mayor McCullough, Commissioner Adamchak, and the Manhattan Mercury for opening up this conversation. The debates on the local Facebook group were certainly interesting before they were taken down. Some people claim that this issue is too ugly to talk about on Facebook. But sometimes reality is ugly. These dialogues will be uncomfortable, but they need to happen. If we allow fear and misinformation to dictate how we treat those who call Manhattan home, we will only deepen the crisis that we are already in. We are at a crossroads and the city of Manhattan needs to take a stand. Here is an opportunity for our city to lead by example. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Any other comments?
Hi, David Dvotowski, 100 South Delaware. I always tell myself I'm not going to talk at these meetings. You guys got a tough job. I am not supportive of decreasing public comment. I do think, though, you need to look at how can we make public comment more effective. So I can see the motivation here. You know, how do we make the meetings more efficient? How do we make public comment more collegial? How do we actually have good conversations? I don't think, though, eliminating public comment is the solution. And, you know, I ask the question, I guess, what's changed? You know, us that have been around a while. Why has public comment become so fractionated? And I'll give you a couple hypotheses to think about. Maybe this should be on the work agenda, truthfully. Rather than adopting, you know, this standard, have a discussion on how do we better engage? And then, what's the best way to achieve that? My hypothesis is one thing is, you know, when I was sitting on the park and rec board and we were interviewing firms to do the initial analysis of the indoor rec center stuff. It was interesting because we hired a firm because they were supposed to lead a community process. And then what happened was that community process was bypassed and we went right to the two-middle-school model. And then I left town for eight years, part-time. But we didn't have the process. You know, I was a pretty advocate of, you know, having a year-long discussion about what we really need, but we rushed to a solution. I actually thought the solution was good, so I'm not criticizing that. But the process wasn't there. So during that process, some things happened, right? Which I think have been consistent in Manhattan. One thing is a small group of people got a great idea and they were able to not engage the public, but sell that idea. And actually, I've seen that for like 30 years here. We get a small group of people in their little social bubble to come up with a good idea. But rather than engaging everybody in this process, they try to sell it. So I think that's one way to look at community engagement, because I study this, right? Come up with a great idea and sell it locally. Another solution is, which I've been involved with a lot, is come up with some evidence-based practice or best practice and say you know more than everybody else locally. And then use that as power to convince the local community to do that. And in fact, a whole industry has evolved around that. It's called consultants, right? And I can tell you the wave of the consulting sales job from everything that becomes the thing you can sell to the local community and you say it's evidence-based practice and it really isn't. You just label it that. And then you get the community to spend a bunch of money to implement that and use your power to say, do that. So that's one solution. And hey, I'm in the College of Public Health, so, you know, we know better, right? And I'm joking about that. And then the third community, the third solution, right, is, is, I guess, so I guess I'm mixing things up here a bit. But the third solution is, hey, you know, I come from business. Business has a model to be more efficient. Let's do a hierarchical, top-down decision-making process and move forward because that's how you do it. The problem with that, though, is business is not government. And one key thing I don't think people understand is community feedback in businesses, do you buy my thing or not? Because you're always accountable to the market, right? You're always like, "I can do whatever I want in my business, but if people don't buy it, I'm out." That's the feedback process. In Manhattan, in government, the feedback process is voting, right? That's two years of waiting to get feedback. Or the feedback process is an unscientifically valid survey that you say is scientifically valid so that you can sell your story, right? Because hey, as you know, market research doesn't, it's really difficult. So it certainly isn't any context is not really in our time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay?
Yes, I have something.
Oh.
Do I go?
Sure, go ahead. You did your sign.
Go. You'll just need to state your name and address before you start. Yeah, correct. Okay. My name is Tessa Anderson. My preferred name is Rowan. I reside at 2280 West Chester Drive, Manhattan, Kansas 66503. I never got the chance to express my initial concerns for our community at the council meeting following Trump's inauguration. And while those concerns still stand, they have developed from anticipatory concerns for the future of our nation and our Manhattan community to a more complex worries that are based in the exponentially more terrifying and quickly changing reality that we are living in. It is undeniable that we are barreling towards a fascist state of government ruled by violence and division. You can deny this, but if it looks like a fascist duck, waddles like a fascist duck, and enacts policies like a fascist duck, it's probably a fascist duck, wouldn't you agree? I'm having daily conversations with close friends, family, and strangers in this town of all backgrounds discussing how we are going to make it through this without dying or letting other people we love die. I do not trust any of you to care for me, my people, and this community, and we will never forgive you when you inevitably abandon the rest of us. I won't forgive you when you claim that you did your best and that you thought you were doing the right thing because I'm telling you now that you are not. I hope that the decisions that you have made and the decisions that you were inevitably going to make because of your indifference towards human beings who are not similar to you, you make absolutely no peace with. I hope that you look around at what is happening and hope you understand and/or figure out what your responsibility is here and that you can act to change at any point. I hope that someday you act and think, act for and think more about people than profit and pride. We all know that each and every one of you shuts your ears and falls asleep when it's time to hear the public opinion. You work so hard. You are so important. And you deserve to get some rest from all the hard work you've been doing, which is why I was so surprised to learn that you shortened the amount of time for us to speak. Are you sure that 30 minutes will be long enough? Was nap time a little too long? I also wake up groggy and unable to make thoughtful decisions after too long of a nap. Either way, I hope that you get some rest for all this hard work that you are doing. If you need resources on how to get more at rest, I'm sure someone in the community would be willing to support you and provide the help that you need to get the rest you deserve. I'm not sure who, but someone surely. These words aren't really for you, but for us, the people, to look back and say, "I told you so." If you manage to wake up and hear anything, hear this. The community does not forgive you for the heartless decisions that you have made and we will not forgive you for the violence you will claim to have made, for the violence that you will claim to have had no other choice to have committed. I personally do not forgive you for the heartless decisions that you have made and I will not forgive you for the violence you will claim to have had no other choice to have committed, as expressed by the Commissioner at the previous commission's meeting. Good night.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come up.
Sign in before I start.
Great.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Riley. I live at 108 East Butterfield Road in Northview. I approach this podium with the sincere belief that all of you are trying your best. I believe that each and every one of you entered into this position with good thoughts, good hopes, good dreams, the desire to serve your community and improve it and bring wealth and prosperity. I would sincerely hope that you listen to me when I say that your decision is counterintuitive to that goal. Government is not a business. Government is not something to be done in the most efficient manner possible. You operate in a community that has thoughts and feelings and cutting off their ability to communicate that can only build resentment. It harms your legitimacy and it harms the general sentiment towards you. In fact, it harms my sentiment towards you. I should be home cooking dinner for my spouse. It's their birthday. I have work at 5:00 in the morning. I would like to be in bed by 8:00. I have a feeling after the decision, the proposed decision that you guys have made, I will not be able to settle until at least midnight. I really don't have much else to say. I have no desire to tear into any one of you in particular, but I would ask that you hear my sincere plea to not go forward on this decision and know with the full, my full resolve, that if you do choose to do so, I will spend every day until your next election campaigning against each and every one of you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else going to pop up? No? Then I will close public comments and turn to Commissioner comments.
So I am having a coffee next Saturday, the 15th, at 9:00 in the Gross Spec Room of the Manhattan Public Library. Anybody, please come and have some really good constructive dialogue. I will bring coffee and donuts. So I'd love to see all of you there to have a good conversation. Thank you.
Susan. Okay. I would just say that... What? Sure.
I just would like to acknowledge Katie's comment. We did discuss what actions we might be able to take in the current environment, focusing on migrants to our community. We did discuss it at our retreat, as was reported at the Mercury, and we agreed that we would continue to have that discussion.
I'd just like to say, we haven't adopted this policy yet. We're going to talk about it on February 11th. I do hear what you have to say and I'm very concerned with the polarization of comments and the fact that I feel that the public does not have the trust in us that they have had in the past. I personally think that I need to hear from everyone. Obviously, those nights can go on a little long and so putting some time limits would be reasonable. Perhaps asking at the beginning of the meeting, how many people want to speak? And then saying three minutes a person, if you've got 20 people out there. I ran for this position because I want to represent people, not just my own feelings. We've talked this over, but I think on the 11th, we'll talk it over some more. And please come and talk to us and bring your thoughts. There's a lot to what Dr. Dvotowski said about hearing the other side of the position and not just from consultants. I always think about the music man when he comes to Mason City with telling everybody they had to have an instrument and talks them all into something that they might not have done. So also, I'm saddened to hear comments in the public about people who are not what I'd call bland white. I am on the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership and one of our... One of, I am on the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership, and one of our renters, who's very, very happy there, cautioned me about one of our maintenance men, who is Colombian, but of course, he's been here for 40 years, so he's American. So in the future, I don't know what the city commission can do to build trust, to build positive looks at people who perhaps aren't, don't mirror our, you know, what we think, but I hope we can work on that. Okay, the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have been previously reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. A commissioner may request an item to be removed from separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comment from the public related to any item on the consent agenda or to the city commission is allowed. Each person will be limited to one speaking opportunity for five minutes. Okay? So any comments on the consent agenda? Questions? Thoughts?
We move that we approve.
Try not to sound so disappointed. Amber Houston, 408 Houston Street. It is clear that this commission lacks vision. You think that we're competing with other cities for tourist dollars and that we should cater to out-of-towners who want weekend condos instead of our own tax-paying citizens. That narrow point of view, if left in a position as powerful as yours, will ultimately kill the city we love. The only cities that will survive the deepening recession, worsening political climate, and the devastating effects of climate change on our supply lines and resources will be the ones that face these threats head-on.
Amber, how does this relate to anything?
This relates to the mud hole?
It's not on our consent agenda.
It's not on our consent.
The mud hole is not on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. I'll save it for next time.
Mayor, I do believe Amber is referring to the comment, the Midtown Land Company LLC.
Yep, that would be the mud hole.
It's not.
It's the same project.
No, it's...
I'm sorry, I don't know the legal description of the mud hole.
I think, I don't think that we're talking about...
This refers to the Handy Corner Lot.
Okay, what's going on the Handy Corner Lot?
We are terminating the agreement with the company.
As a result of doing what?
Well, Amber, I don't think this, you know, come back to us next week if you have something to say, but this doesn't have anything to do with...
Okay, so you don't want to hear from us?
Okay. So I see no items being removed from the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Okay, the next is a public hearing. The procedure here is the same as always. We have up to five minutes to make a comment. There's only one item on that, and that's considering levying special assessments for 14 public improvement districts. Here comes Rena to give us the word. Looking lovely.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Let's see. Tonight, we are having a public hearing over our special assessment projects that will be bonded with the May 2025 bond issue. We sell bonds normally twice a year in May and November, and for this May series, we have some special assessment projects. I count 14, maybe, it may be 13, but all benefit districts were established by a petition and a resolution. On January 21st, the commission said tonight, as the date to hold a public hearing, all property owners were notified by letter about the amount and purpose of their assessment, and the notice was published in the Manhattan Mercury. The purpose of the hearing is to hear questions or objections from property owners concerning their assessments, and as of today, I have not received any phone calls regarding those calculations or any technical issues regarding the assessments. The cost information is on the slide in front of you, and we have Candlewood Shopping Center, Turn Lane, some Highland at Grandmere, Sewer Street and Water Improvements, Stack Hill Golf Course Water Line, Elijah Edition, and Henry Edition. They have Sewer Street and Water Improvements as well. The sidewalk for Genesis Health Clubs, and then the Stack Hill Business Community Edition, Sewer and Water Extensions. The total is $3,187,000, $187,324.20, of which $12,419 is related to the city at large, which we will pay cash for from the water and stormwater funds, which leaves 3.175 to bond. Here is a map of all of the improvements across the city. And then this map just provides the estimated special assessment amount per lot annually. So this is for Candlewood, and it's just the one lot. Highland at Grandmere Unit 2, they have lots 30 to 37. There was an unplanted tract for the sewer improvement that was paid in full already, and the street and water improvements did not relate to the unplanted tract. The Stack Hill Golf Club, the water improvement is related to an platted tract, and that amount is reflected of $7,992.69. Elijah Edition has 24 lots, and the Sewer, Street, and Water Improvements annually are reflected, and they are estimated at $5,225.62 per lot. Here's a map of Elijah Edition. Henry Edition, they were originally lots 1 through 7. However, Lot 3 was replanted into Henry Edition Unit 2, Lot 1. So Sewer, Street, and Water for those seven lots totaled $6,746.11 a year, estimated. Here's a map of Henry Edition. And then the Genesis Health Club sidewalk, and that is estimated at $2,067.66. And then we have the Stack Hill Business Community Extension of the Water and Sewer for Lots 1 and 2 and 3, and those are estimated at $4,242.84 a year. Our next steps: Approve the special assessment ordinance in two weeks on February 18th, and then property owners will receive a second letter after that date, which will give them 30 days to pay off, and that payment is by March 21st. If they're not paid, the assessments will be bonded in May and amortized over 20 years, and we anticipate having our bond sale on Thursday, May 15, 2025, and the assessments will appear on the November 2025 tax statements. Yes, ma'am?
I have one, and I'm sorry, Rena, I'm betraying my ignorance here. The work on all of the, this has all been done.
Yes, it's all complete. We issued temporary notes, and it's just time to pay off those temporary notes.
So this is repayment of what the city has spent?
Yes.
Now being conveyed to the owners of those properties?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And there is a...
You're off.
There is a small amount of money that comes to the city for facilitating these.
Yes, we do have an administrative fee. Yes, we do.
Okay.
Rena, what was the portion on Genesis and Henry Edition that the city, do you know what that was for? Like, why we have a city portion on those two?
I can look them up.
Sorry, I tried to go back and I...
Usually, it's oversizing if it's related to a water line or a street or sewer line. I can look up the Genesis Health Club one real quick.
That was more curiosity. I understand that's not necessarily the nature of the public hearing.
No, that's fine. I will look for that. If you want to open up for public comment, to open up the public hearing, that's, would be good, but I can, after...
So when we, I guess, have these property owners already been paying, like, from when we temp noted, or they're just...
No.
But they, were they aware when we did the, because we had to establish these districts months, like, before?
So some of these petitions were submitted in 2019. The Genesis Health Club was 2016, so the property owner at the time may have been just a developer.
Sure.
So when lots were sold, those developers would and should have relayed that information to the buyers of the lots.
Okay.
So during that timeframe, if a lot is purchased, we will, at times, get inquiries from a Realtor, a title company, a potential buyer. I can't say that we've crossed every single property owner. Some of them are still in the developer's hands, but it's up to that developer to provide that information to whoever's purchasing the lot, that there will be special assessments within three to four years of the petition being approved by the city commission.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think what's sad is that some people just don't put those things together in their head, and then they get their first big tax bill, and they don't see the difference between specials and their property. I mean, you know, and they come to you and say, "I'm paying," you know, and you say, "Well, you're probably paying X number of specials, too." And so it is hard just to make sure everybody is cognizant of what's happening, because it doesn't happen right away.
If you have a good banker, they'll figure out that...
Well, you know, sometimes a property is sold before we get to the, you know...
Right, when you go to get, when you go to get the mortgage, they're usually, they're usually going to want to figure that out.
Yeah, good, good point.
And the resolutions that are approved by the city commission are sent to the register of deeds, so when people are inquiring about lots, that information should be reflected, and then they can contact us as well. I think I found the information about Genesis and what is going on with that city-at-large amount.
And I know you went over it, but everyone was notified of all these numbers and everything and...
Yep.
For their lots, all the property owners of record and all that.
Yes, sir. We get the information from the county. According to the memo from June 6, 2017's meeting, we own 15, approximately 15% of the total frontage of the sidewalk, so that's why we're paying for that, for the Genesis Health Club.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I will step aside for public hearing.
Any public comment? Oh, yes.
Hi, sir.
Okay.
There are other people who would comment, but we just got our letters yesterday.
Okay, would you like to sit down? Because we only allow one person at the podium. Just...
Sure.
No, you can sit right here by Rena.
Maybe I should go sit down and she should... I'm Marlo Clausen, and we live at 3915 Victory Drive. And like she was saying, we just got our letter yesterday with a note in there from the postal service saying that it was found loose in the mail, but it had been sent out January 23rd, so we just got it yesterday. We've been here before concerning the issue of special assessments. We have spoken to numerous people involved with special assessments and have been told various things. I'm going to cut to the topic that we have at hand here. We are 100%, we 100% object to how these special assessments are calculated and distributed. We came up here to retire and live in our dream spot, which is up here on Victory Drive. We were the first ones who took up residence there. When given the opportunity to purchase Lot 24 next to our home lot of 25, we thought it was a good idea, because Lot 24 was a small lot, and it would be difficult to build a house on that lot without being very close to our home. I might add that when they started putting in Goheen Drive, half of our Lot 24 was excavated and hauled away. We questioned what had happened. The engineer who designed the road came out, looked at it, and said, "Yeah, this isn't right." So they hauled back a bunch of crappy soil with a lot of rocks in it, which eliminated the natural grass lot and cost us money. So we were made a deal to purchase lots 24, 23, and 22, since they all connected to our home lot of 25. We obviously were unaware of what was to come. Here's the issue: Lots 24, 23, and 22, which are on the agenda, are going to be assessed specials at $5,225.62 per lot per year. Those three lots will have no road usage, no sewer usage, no water usage. If these three lots were figured by square feet, like what our home lot is, the cost to us would be less than half of what is proposed. As retired and fixed income and non-fixed income, what is being proposed makes it next to impossible for us to live here. To further this frustration, we have two-story apartment condos, townhomes, whatever you want to call them, across the street from us. Some have seven units, two bedrooms, some five units, two bedroom, and some three bedroom. These lots are going to be assessed the same, similar to our, the vacant lots that we have, which is $5,225.62. If there is one person living in each of those units of the seven-unit building, their special tax assessment would be $746.52 per year. How much more usage of road, the sewer, the water will there be compared to our vacant lots? Does this sound fair and equitable? One question we have is this: Who, if any, of you have ever come up to this area where we live and looked before zoning or rezoning? This was a pristine area for beautiful, single-family homes overlooking Manhattan and the Rolling Prairie. Why hasn't the city or the developers taken some of these unknown burdens in the name of promoting growth in Manhattan? Where is the partnership? It appears the burden falls solely on the homeowner. Some, here are some figures that I would like for you to think about. Lot 25, our home lot, 17,050 square feet. Specials figured by square foot. That comes to $4,030.51 per year. Lot 24, 8,903 square feet. The specials figured by lot are going to be $5,225.62. Lot 23, 9,696 square feet. Specials figured by lot, $5,225.62. Lot 22, 10,971 square feet. Specials figured by lot, $5,225.62. Lot 24 is 48% smaller than Lot 25, 23% higher. All three of those lots are smaller than our lot, and they're 23% higher in specials.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like?
You will hear from us.
Are there any other comments? Danielle, could you just speak briefly to what state statutes allow us to do on, I mean, what we're, Katie, on a, you know, on this situation?
Yeah, I was just asking Katie, so I will defer to our city attorney, Jackson. Thank you.
So the statute requires that every lot that potentially benefits from the infrastructure improvements is assessed in an equitable way. It does allow, it has three main ways that are assessed. It's linear, linear frontage, square foot of the lot, or then you can also do shares that are equally spread across the lot. So in this case, there were two different subdivisions that had different calculations, different methods for calculation of the shares, but those are all allowed by the statute.
How did we get to the, who makes that determination on how those were?
The developer requested in their petition for the benefit districts.
Okay.
And there's no question, for example, out in the county, if you are on a corner lot, you end up, you know, paying much more than the...
So just to recap, it was by linear, linear frontage... So just to recap, it was by linear, linear frontage, square footage of the lot, or by, like, an equal share?
Yeah, those are the three most used calculation methods under the statute.
And it is, there is a statute, which is important.
And so how did we, so I guess, these were two different, yeah, can we go back and just look at the, the map there?
For Elijah Edition.
Oh, okay, I see, so it was, so we had two different subdivisions included in this.
No, just one subdivision.
Okay, okay, I got you.
The way the lots are, these are single-family, unattached, these are attached.
Okay.
They all have the same amount of special assessments per lot.
And how did we, how did we calculate that? Just by share?
Equal share per lot, so the total amount reflected here divided by twenty-four lots.
Okay.
And that's based on the petition and the approved resolution. I understand Mr. Clausen's comments, we've talked about this numerous times, but the developer petitioned the city in this manner, and developed it in this manner.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Maybe, hold on, I'm reading something.
Okay, read away. Okay.
I guess I have a question for, maybe for Katie or for Rena, I'm not sure. Are we able to approve the first reading of this ordinance with the exclusion of the Elijah Edition, or do we approve it with that still included, but then will the Clausens have an opportunity to dispute the amount of specials that they're being asked to pay?
I would say that based on the petition resolution, the calculation is correct in terms of the will of the commission, that is something you would have to provide direction to our city manager and myself, to see if we need to do something else to move forward. We would have to then seek legal counsel as well in terms of if it's a change from the petition and resolution, but these things are based on the state statute and were approved to issue temporary notes in the manner that they were currently, so if there are changes to that original assessment in terms of not on an equal share per lot for the twenty-four lots, we would have to have some more time to review that and redo calculations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Rena, what happens is, so if we don't approve this, what happens?
You cannot not approve this, because we have to issue permanent bonds.
Okay.
So, I mean, you could delay it and...
That's what I mean, like, tonight, I meant, like, tonight, if this...
Well, the state statute for special assessments has a timeline, so we have to be able to have the second reading and then allow the thirty days to pay, that's all per state statute. And then after that, then we go out and notify the public that we want to go to market to issue bonds. So we would have to have some direction between now and the February eighteenth meeting in terms of what you all would want to do, in terms of that additional conversation.
And we have a total cost we have to get to, so if you change it, you change everybody's calculation, or if you want the city just to pay for it, I suppose you could do that.
No, I, I think we're opening ourselves up for a can of worms, so to speak. The, there is the option of selling the extra lots that, that our speakers have mentioned, you know, so that then someone else would be responsible for those specials, because they own several lots, that's the real issue here, they have to pay, you know, through, yeah. So, I mean, that's an option, it's probably not very palatable, but, but I do think we are, we are carefully prescribed certain statutes, and we don't want to start, you know.
I think the problem is the petition passed that way, I mean, that's what everyone went into the agreement with, that understanding, even if it wasn't communicated, well, that's kind of what the deal was.
So, any more comments from anybody? Then I would, oh, yeah.
Okay, Alex Van Dyke, fifty-six oh six Goheen Drive, I'm a resident of the Elijah Edition as well. I think I more just have confusion and maybe even looking, it might be more of a conversation, but when we bought our house in last December, was, it was, we were told basically that the estimates of the specials were going to be around four thousand dollars, that's what we were budgeting for, that's how everything was kind of set, and as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any additional sewer, street, sidewalk, anything like that done in those areas, and that, the estimate came from my Realtor, who got it from someone at the city, and I think my confusion is why it's over a thousand dollars higher without any additional work being done. So I, I just don't really understand that, it feels a little predatory, if that makes any sense.
We have been made aware that the information that we provide is based on initially the petition amount, which is always higher than the construction amount, and then once we get the construction information in terms of that bid, we then add in any contingencies, the design, the soft costs, and so we've always been providing around a five thousand or so amount. Here recently, we were made aware that there is information out in the public that the costs are at four thousand dollars. That doesn't come from the city, and we've had that exchange with some Realtors, and it's unfortunate that that has been provided to property owners or potential property owners, but we do not provide that, we did not provide that four thousand dollar amount, it's always been around the five thousand dollar amount, and like I said, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, I, I would echo, I've had people ask me that question, and when I've gone back and checked with the city, the city has been very forthcoming, and it was the Realtor who wasn't as forthcoming, or maybe the Realtor just didn't understand, I don't know. But, yeah, it's, it's a lot more money, but...
Yeah, okay, I'll get the email that I got, or that she had received to make sure that, who it was from.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Rena, just to clarify, when people have those questions, they, they can contact your office, community development, who are they contacting?
There's a formal line that they can use to inquire some of the Realtors and the, oh, the title companies, they just call or email, but like I mentioned, we have been getting quite a few calls regarding Elijah Edition and discrepancy in terms of what we're providing based on what they, or compared to what they've received from the Realtor, title company, or the developer.
Does the register of deed have?
No.
No, okay. Okay. Yeah, please.
All right, my name is Kayla Anderson Swanson, I am a resident of fifty-eight thirty Goheen Drive. I don't believe I would follow under Elijah Edition, I would actually follow under Henry Edition, but we're all kind of in the same neighborhood, so I've, you know, gotten familiar with both sides. So just a little context, I came here about five years, lived in apartments, my fiance goes to K-State, just recently graduated with a life science degree, and we've kind of enjoyed life here. Both came from originally Omaha, Nebraska, which has a decently high cost of living, and it was kind of a relief coming to somewhere a little bit smaller. I, you know, have found good success over the last few years, working around fifty or plus hours a week, and I am about twenty-two, twenty-three years old, so I have a bit more energy for it, and it makes it a little bit easier to facilitate a higher income job and spend more time working, but I will say, I tell all of my clients and all of my customers, I do not really have a life outside of work, but it's at the cost of gaining a house, gaining a car, being able to live at a place and not have to worry about a landlord breathing down your neck. And about February, I want to say about February thirteenth, I purchased my home at Goheen's, first time I've ever bought a home, first mortgage, kind of taking on a lot of responsibilities that I was brand new to, but I was very interested in it, and I spent a lot of time researching it and tried to grasp and understand exactly how all this was going to work. I, like them, had been kind of quoted a rough estimate on special taxes from both my builder, my Realtor, and even talking some, someone in the city, I'm not entirely sure as to who I spoke to, because it was about a year ago, but they did state to me, by my calculations, I distinctly remember about three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars a month was my calculation, that coming out to about thirty-six hundred dollars, and now I'm kind of looking at my tax assessment and how much I'll be paying, and if I'm not, I'm trying to remember the exact number, do you have for Henry Edition? Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so Henry Edition, yeah, sixty-seven forty-six, all of a sudden, coming out of nowhere, and don't get me wrong, there's a lot of other things I could be worried about, but sixty-seven forty-six minus thirty-six hundred would put me at around a thirty-one forty-six increase, which is almost a two-hundred percent increase. I know I'm young, and it can be a bit easier for young people who aren't as much on a fixed income to handle stuff, but at the same time, I will state this, I did some calculations, I took my mortgage, I took my PMI insurance, my insurance, because realistically, you're not going to just go out at twenty-three and buy a house and just buy cash, so I'm accounting for PMI, I'm accounting for home insurance, I'm accounting for just living, cost of living, I'm, I'm not accounting for groceries, bills, like utility heat, you know, I'm paying into that, but my calculations were coming out to about, where was it? Ah, so as of two thousand twenty-four, I paid about one hundred and four thousand fifty-five dollars, not accounting for special taxes. That was just between buying a house, owning a house, and having a car here with property taxes alone, I was paying a hundred and four thousand dollars at the age of twenty-two. That, to me, is insane. I bought into it, I bought a house at the price I bought, but my, my, my issue that I'm running into is that having an extra three, four thousand dollars thrown on top of that is not going to make it any easier. I still have to deal with the stress of interest debt, I take care of my fiance, I'm the only person really that works in my household, and I've met, actually met these guys, they've been great, they've been really good neighbors, and it hurts my heart to, to think that they may have to leave what they wanted to be their forever home, just over something that should be assessed maybe in a different way. I can understand where everyone comes from on lot sizes and different things for developers and people buying into it, but in the end, you are talking about that, the water lines, water usage, you are talking about road usage, seven cars versus one car would be a difference that I think would be divided up in between eight different separate, you know, amounts, rather than just a single paid by seven versus one paid by one, making it divided by two, which to me seems kind of unfair, especially in the sense that we're all getting the same amount of usage out of it. I will own up to paying what I am needed and what I'm required, but I definitely would say that a ninety-six thousand dollar expense coming from me at my age is kind of insane. It's more than I put in my car, it's more than my debt combined besides my house, so it just kind of seems crazy to me that we were told one thing and kind of switched, and we're kind of just having to deal with it, but I appreciate your time and look forward to hearing from you.
Anybody else? Okay.
You've heard the two ends of it, we're on a fixed income, he's young, it's the same thing. We started learning about what the specialist...
I'm sorry, could you give me your name and address?
I'm sorry, Jean Clausen. We started learning about...
Address, please.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, thirty-nine fifteen Victory Drive.
Thank you.
We started learning about the assessments that might be assessed in May of this year about a year ago, and we have been here three or four times to every department, including the city manager, we've talked to everyone about it, and have not ever gotten, until we got the letter last night, what the, it was actually going to be. Like everybody else, we weren't told, we were told it was going to be around three thousand dollars. When we decided to buy the lots and not put anything on it, just to buy the lots, we went and read everything that the city had about those lots, what could happen, we read forty-six pages at the offices, we did everything due diligence that we could do, and we had no idea that this is what we're, because ours is over four hundred thousand. So, I mean, it's like, I understand that you guys are like, we can just assess the homeowner, but when you buy your home and you're not told what it's going to be, and it's not, it's just, I mean, what choice do we have? We, there's like, there's no, nobody can help us anywhere, we've been, we've talked to every single person, there's two ladies in the finance department that we've probably visited with, I don't know, four or five times, just to go get updates, I just, we don't know where else to go, and we don't sleep at night, and we worry about it all the time, and we don't know what to do, and we're not alone, our whole neighborhood is that way. It's just, and in addition to that, it has been rezoned like four times, it was supposed to be single-family, then it got rezoned to multifamily, and then it got, now there, it looks like army barracks up there, and if you guys are, please go up and look at it, and it's the most beautiful, pristine area of the city, because you've got this beautiful view with now about, I don't know, seven army barracks up there? Please come look. And when they took our property away and they sliced it down, we were gone for two hours and came back, and half of our property was gone, and the guy in the, in the deal said, well, this is what my GPS tells me to do, and then when the fellow from the city came out and said, oh, yeah, it was a mistake, they brought in dirt, but the whole ground goes like this now, and we've had to fill in the dirt, we've had to pay for more money, he's ruined some machinery trying to get it all fixed up. It's just been miserable, and there's no help. So, just updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else going once? Okay, we are considering levying special assessments for fourteen public improvement districts. We will approve a first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments against the following benefit, benefiting properties in fourteen public improvement districts. Candlewood Shopping Center, Turn Lane, Street Improvements, S T one nine one four, The Highlands at Grand Mayor, Unit Two, Sanitary Sewer, S S one two oh one four, Street, S T two oh one two, and Water, W A two oh two four, Stag Hill Ga- Stag Hill Golf Course, Waterline Improvements, W A two one oh nine, Elijah Edition, Sanitary Sewer, S S one nine six, Street, S T one nine oh six, and Water, W A nineteen sixteen, The Henry Edition, Sanitary Sewer, three three two one oh seven, Street, S T two oh one, two one oh four, and Water, W A two oh one six, Genesis Health Club Sidewalk Improvements, S W sixteen oh three, and Stag Hill Business Community Edition Sewer, S S twenty-three oh seven, and Water, W A twenty-three eleven, Extensions. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Do I have to repeat all of that?
Yeah. No.
Okay, I move that we approve first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments against those benefit districts in the fourteen public improvement districts as read by the mayor. Second.
It's been moved in second.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That is our agenda for the evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn the February fourth, two thousand twenty-five city commission meeting.
Second.
Moving second, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.